Good evening. It is 6:35 on the 15th of July 2021. This is the question, ladies and gentlemen, what is their motion to approve the meeting?
We make a motion to approve the meeting.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
You may adjourn this. With that, gentlemen, I don't know if you have opportunity to read the agenda. I know you've discussed here, but way off the bat, we're signing documents for commercial development. 158 Main Street, 166 Main, 17 Wing, and we have retail development applicant represented by Patrick Almudoff, P.E., G.P.I., Greenland, Peterson, Inc. With that, Mickey here is the owner. Do we have that paper to sign? We've done everything that we had to do on that, correct?
Yep.
As far as I know. They were supposed to get us a revised set of documents?
Yep.
All current dates? And list them on the final report. The site still got jumped on. I don't know if we can sign it yet.
Sure does. Just came from there.
It's better.
This will give them signature on both of these files.
To make you feel any better, my father left over 90 vehicles for me to get rid of.
Ninety?
Ninety, plus some construction equipment, plus some trailers. And it may have all been useful at one time, but by the time I think it got to me, there was everything just all rusted up.
Even on Tony, even on Tony, it's all gonna be gone in two weeks. Two weeks. But that's 16 weeks ago.
You're on tape now. You're on tapes.
Tony, two weeks period.
With this, can we make copies for us to keep some?
Yep.
Do you have any here or?
Uh, many copies.
As long as we have, I want to sign that one too. You can put that in.
Is there a date on that? The one we signed?
Long time coming.
April 22nd, 2021.
Is it on? Or is it signatures?
Yes.
That's the correct date?
That's good. That's also not by 14. You know, I want a date this 14 too. That way they both agree.
It's fine with me.
July 14?
Do we have another set of these?
Uh, those?
Yes.
Uh, yes, those need to go to town clerk. There is an A&R.
I just want to give one to... Does Mickey have to have one of the town clerk? He's stamped already.
Uh, well, I understand Pam using them, so.
Okay, the rest of those don't have to be signed?
No, this is an A&R.
I just want to keep one copy for us. Why, Jamie has to have one of these for her files?
Yes.
So we need one. Uh, we have to give Mickey one, correct? Or you get that for the billings right there.
Sign more than one, I should, according to my attorney, I think.
Yeah.
I have one here, so.
The rest of those 14 plans, Mickey, the rest of those 14 plans all have that same date on them. April 21st.
That whole set was submitted to the town clerk as one set.
Okay.
Those are pages from 1 to like 15, something like that?
Yes, we're at 14. I just don't want there to be any mix-up of what plans to be signed. You know what I mean? So if some of the other ones don't have that date on them.
I think every sheet had. The original date was the same, but the revision date in the log changed.
In this log, yeah.
Yeah.
As long as it's listed here, then we're fine.
Next one? Do we have one more here?
Uh, this is an A&R. Same, same development. And...
So I did say?
Yes.
By combining the three lots, yes. I will give you, give me a paper, I might as well consider lots.
Okay.
Just combines the three lots. This is probably the easiest one to sign. I would make a motion to approve the A&R plan as soon as possible.
Two seconds.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you may adjourn this.
That's the A&R?
No, they're doing the A&R right now.
And that A&R, how many copies are there?
Yeah.
Nine or?
Uh, I'm not sure.
You just have to fill out the form, maybe, or the wire.
So take it.
Maybe it's 15. The board and father will meet.
That's what I'm trying to sign.
That's right. 540 R Main Street, who's here for that? If you want to set your stuff up and that easy, the board will assign these papers and move right away with it. We have one of these copies and two copies of the one we signed. Who is the other company that we have?
Yes.
One of these to go to one copy here and one of those to Mickey.
Yes.
So he can get to his lawyer. And now, you feel pretty won't start till tomorrow till some time comes, correct?
Okay.
Understand that, Nick?
For A&R?
Yeah.
I think it wasn't incorporated right there.
I'm not sure, but if she has to have it, there's gotta be something with it. I don't think anybody's gonna object. As long as you have the right paperwork that you need.
You have any more of the signature on signatures?
Those, the A&R, that's all set. That plan is signed. You have the other one, 15, and we'll release on that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do we have the original A&R?
For... The original one?
You have the... Do you have the Mylar?
No. Mylar does, well.
You need that to record.
The Mylar is actually counted. The Mylar is with the town clerk.
She has it?
Yes.
They can't, they can't record?
I thought that's what was in front of you.
No, that's just the paper. Registry's gotta have the Mylar signed.
So you were on the phone with Phil today?
Yeah.
Somebody was on the phone with you. They couldn't find it, but then they told Phil they found it.
I just talked to Pam about it. Pam brought me up, brought me up to talk to the A&R, and that's all she had given me at the time. No Mylar. Uh, the plans already were up here from previously when they were brought in. And other than that, those are the paperwork we have received on it.
Well, you need to track it down.
I'll work on that tomorrow.
I mean, we've already, we've already made the motion to approve the plan. So I mean, even if we've got to shovel it around for signatures, we can, we can do that. You can't, you can't record the paper. It can have Mylar, the original Mylar.
I can get that around tomorrow. I will try. Can't make an example, once we find the Mylar. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a copy of that other plan that you signed for this?
Oh, I have that here.
We all set?
Thank you.
Take Tony out and go to the building.
Next on the agenda, proposal array at 540 R Main Street. T.J.A. Clean Energy applicant represented by Atlantic Design Engineers, Sandwich Mask. Plans and accompanying documentation are available for the inspection at Tom Clark's office. Boddingway Building, 130 Main Street, first floor. Please introduce yourself, sir.
Sure. I'm Nick from Atlantic Design Engineers, representing T.J.A. Clean Energy, set at 540 R Main Street. I believe the last time we were in front of the board was back in April, so kind of need to size to view. Also, see what would change. We, since that time, we have addressed all the comments from the town, fire department, and division of fishing wildlife. One of the questions was to bring notice to a hydrant that was on Main Street. Provided distance to solar field is 444 feet from the hydrant to the solar field. That was requested because fire department had asked about anything that would be over 1,000 feet. Be assisting. Under 1,000 feet, it would be for assistance inside. We have this as a priority hydrant. Because of other aspects, I would admit, the site has decreased overall from 12.9 acres to 12.4. Overall, AC wattage went down from 4.3 to 12.1. Another major aspect was the fire department was to add gravel access road all the way around the site. Initially had shown gravel access road in the middle of the path. Now we have a big window at the side.
It's 20 feet wide gravel access road?
14.
14. It's still gonna be a tough turn in the southeast corner. We did actually make sure that truck that... Maybe my truck, if the fire chief is happy with it, that's fine.
He recommended 14 feet in on our new applications. That'll be on one of the stipulations it has. Getting 14 foot gravel all the way around the internal portion of the fence.
If he, when he goes out there to run around the perimeter, he wants the corner on that southeast. I mean, the sharp 90 with 14 foot wide driveway is not a lot of room to get a piece of fire wrap around.
They got like an F-350.
I mean, my driveway's 16 feet wide.
I believe there's a 10 footer, he is on that corner. So. Still tight, understandable. So to continue though, we did pull back more panels on the top. We had paneling clearing the top up here as well. That's we pulled back. That accounts for so many changes. Uh, we also addressed some of the reviewing engineer comments. Major ones to deal with the basin, the southwest corner. We've increased the size. That basin now includes, contains all storm water going to that portion of water. Prior to, we did have water over top of the basin. We no longer do that. Been contained then by the 100 year storm. Leaving overflow there for a secondary emergency area. We're seeing some of that's passing under here. But we do also have one from the freeboard in that basin. It's an infiltration basin. We have four foot of separation from groundwater. So we feel that's a bit of a risk as well from previous designs. If it overtops, where does the water go from in there? It's over top, we can't have that, but that's a size storm that...
Well, I understand the difference. But when it overtops, the water's going to follow some path according to contours. Where, where is it going to go if it overtops?
Sure. It'll go for the overflow that we have in the riverbed soil. It's spread it. And then it'll come down to the counseling, come by here. There's a development that's over here. Basin's occupied. It actually is a weight, you know, of sound system. We actually did look at that prior previously. That's one of the comments I have a viewer. He asked for a flow analysis, but because again, we are not overtopping any longer from the 100 year storm. I feel like it was necessary to show flow analysis. Another comment was, this is actually in regards to the division of fishing wildlife. Was to clear cut portion of this area for trailer habitat. We did abide by that. Stumps will be tamed. We have pretty detailed explanation. Ask if the stumps leave the ground vegetation. Some trees will be removed, some of the lower vegetation is not to be disturbed whatsoever. That's just to provide access from both sides and also to get to what is in the vicinity.
We're gonna kind of come with a group call?
Any questions? So the immediate changes that have happened since the last meeting. If you guys have any questions.
Seeing that, whereas this is a public hearing, what we do is first, a gentleman on the board can ask questions, and the people in the public can ask questions. So gentlemen on the board, do you have any questions?
Where's the, where's the nearest house onto the west? Does it, does it show on those, on the adjacent houses?
Down here?
Yeah.
Uh, now we do not.
See, where's that part layout? You know, also like, looks like there's a cul-de-sac in the middle of a...
Right, cul-de-sac here, cul-de-sac stops.
So it's generally the road, correct?
That's the pave right now.
Yes.
This is flying drop.
I'm just, I'm just always concerned. I mean, even 100 year storm, it doesn't mean tomorrow we can't get a rainstorm that's worse than that. And I don't want it to flood out anybody's house and distance. You said that flood in Germany, houses have been there for centuries, and they're not there anymore.
Hope it never happens. Right? Rick?
No.
With that, is anybody from the public who'd like to speak, throw a call on this? With that, is there a motion, gentlemen? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you may adjourn this. With that, now...
We'll have to have a set of conditions drafted up.
It's 31. Do you have a decommissioning process already?
Uh, not at the time I had it.
Okay.
Then it would have to be subject to neutral break on a decommissioning process. You can see that becoming one of the standard.
It's part of the 31 things that we have. I'll discuss it with you guys later, but Doug has got it down to 31 articles plus from treasury, plus from storm water and decommissioning. So it comes in all form, package, so we know what we're doing most of the time. Right?
That'll also be the last one. Another weekend, how that we've got it down now.
I should make mention when we have the CPAC, we sent the comments back to the year.
Say it once again, please, I can't do it.
How is that sound? We didn't send it back. We haven't got it back yet, second round yet. So I'm sure that's probably what we want.
Peer review from SW call? Do we, did you ask, did you get in contact with them?
Tried.
Yeah, kind of on.
But he's not now.
Trying to do the best that we can. We want you to get in contact with him, and you pay the bill. We only go do that stuff where we have to pay the bill. Okay, so if you get a hold of Derek in SW call, all early, gets up early in the morning, 6:30, 7 o'clock. Wake him up, get him home.
Call him, I run.
There you go. Doug, do you need anything else on this?
Bill also has these subjects in mind. We will play this one. I'm hoping at this point, we're only talking about minor items, something like that. I don't see anything right here.
Right. We'll have to get a certificate of action and all those 31 things.
Yeah. And if you could get in touch with SW call any time, that would be one more definitely resolved. As final as I can.
That's it? Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, 52 Morris's Lane. Brown Mountain Solar Array located 52 Morris's Lane. On the question assessment, RAP 17, the logs 24, 24B and 24C. At Varego Solar Systems Incorporated, represented by Brandon Smith, P. Varego Solar Systems Incorporated, Global Mass. That's we do.
Good evening. Zach Park is Varego Solar. Good to see you guys in person.
Yep. Zooming, you know, like...
For a while. No, just good to be here in person. So what I got is a storm water and project Google, signed by the landowner, signed by our company, looking for signature for the project. Copy which I will get reported and get a copy of the events in the register.
I know you put it on there.
It's approved on June 3rd.
Does Claire have a chance to go over this certificate of actions?
Do we have a certificate of action on this one?
Aye, do not.
Okay. So what we're gonna have to do is make one up. Do you have a decommissioning number? Okay. Add on this.
Yeah, that's your, your 31?
This is the 31.
One can put a big certificate at the offstage. And then it's been moved by us before.
Board members?
Yep, this is from Pat. Yeah, Pat and I have been coordinating all the signatures and whatnot. And your point earlier about using big work, it's gonna be easier to carry them.
Everything we need, except we need some copies of these. Decommissioning in here? What is the decommissioning in here?
Oh, I got it. Where do you, 281?
Can we make copies of these?
Right now, no, I'm still waiting for...
You guys think it's easy, huh? Is there a motion? You can sign this. Can we keep this to make copies?
I'm hoping to make copies for you.
You have a copy machine in your back pocket? We don't have it. I was a little up, huh?
Couple, couple hours of it. I was gonna record it, but I talked to Pat about signing it, recording it tomorrow. And circulating, recording copies early in the afternoon.
How far do you have to drive to get here?
I'm making the mark. That's good, that's where I see that.
Huh?
You're not close.
Doug, you've been holding on to this. Is there a motion to sign it?
Motion to sign. Okay, sir.
All in favor?
Four, ten fifty.
Ten fifty, ten fifty-two.
Pushing Lane and Robinson Road.
Let me see if there's anybody else.
Same thing, security board, we have two gate deterrents, we never got one.
Okay. Nothing from SW call.
We've been at that for six months, we've been at this a long time.
I understand, I'm just.
It's just.
So that's on the same, right?
Right.
That, before they can start, they've got to post, they've got to post a bond or cash.
Right.
In the amount, subject to.
Now, we have to make this.
Five, nine, four.
Same thing with all these, but once you start doing this with Catherine, see if there's one form that she wants these people to do, whether it's a bond, or money put in, or whatever it might be.
Bonds are tougher, because they'll have a, they have an end date on them.
Okay.
And if you don't call a bond by that sort of date, uh, it lost your chance of anything you're gonna do, that roughly.
Well, it's up to her, I think Catherine wants a special, some type of arrangement for monies for decommissioning. So we made that motion on ten fifty Main Street. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's ten fifty, right?
We got it. Ten fifty.
Yep. Yep. Anything like this number eight?
It's just important. I used to work in Braintree. It's forty-two miles to Braintree. And like, okay, one project in Washington, Garden City. It was forty-two miles.
You have to have another.
Just totally, just a total coincidence.
We can scan them, but we can't go off.
Oh, yeah, print them, but there's no scanner.
We all have to sign those, or just write?
I'm just.
Want to sign?
Three copies?
Yeah.
I'd wait, if you need something, keep it in file.
Slowly to travel. Water dripping on a rock.
Six months to get a transport.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, we're speaking for these two projects, they're good projects from the fundamental standpoint and the association of the power.
That's, that's all, those are all pluses.
Yeah, we know they'll work, it's just, we know they'll work, but just imagine, kind of getting through the.
Through.
Your office, you probably need.
Yeah.
But you probably right one.
Yeah, your office is. Has it changed owners three or four times in the last six or eight years? So that doesn't help any either. And with every new owner coming, a different set of procedures they all have to go through.
Well, this is one copy now.
I have one copy, two, three miles left. We have to track down.
Okay. We can do that for you. With that, we're all set up with Doug?
Thank you, gentlemen. Doug, any questions?
Thank you.
Took on my duties. So real busy now.
Why, I would've thought with lumber going through the roof, that it would've slowed down some.
With that, our next one is zero, one sixty-five miles one. That's a continuous, Doug?
Uh, yes, and not paid for.
Is there a motion to continue zero, one sixty-five miles one until the next one?
From you.
Second to August. How about August nineteen? How about August nineteen? Certificate of action, your approval, fourteen forty-seven five drive. That's yours, right? You have some big work to sign.
One drive, correct?
Yep, everything is done, just make sure that there, was there a decommission number on that, did you notice, Doug?
On that one, on the other one, on the other, uh, brother project.
Yeah, I wish I, I think it's app, you know, search for it.
That's how many we have, so we're.
She knows me?
Huh?
I thought he had a gun in there.
Uh, I don't know.
It's on there.
Who's that?
So, three, three.
Who's that?
That's SW call.
Is there a motion to accept this certificate of action and certificate of approval for proposed, proposed Brown Mountain Array fourteen forty-seven five drive? With the stipulation that we have to come up before we give it to you, we have to come up with a decommissioning price from DW call or from, is it St. Carper?
St. Carper, yeah.
Yep. Or Weston and Sampson. Doug, the last certificate, we added the decommissioning on, that was fifty-two Morris's Lane, or was it?
One Morris is anything, because I have a decommission.
Well, I just remember what it was.
Three, what did you say? Right? Is that what three Morris?
Yeah, it is, but what number was?
But it's not on there.
Oh, they are numbered, I know.
I would just, the last one on, on the paper.
I was trying to gate the open nature app to avoid, I was running gate right over there, I'm saying. So I got cited, then, right, I had someone bring it up. Last name.
You gotta bear with us, brother. I apologize.
Okay, so, not, here's his number eight, it should've been number eight on this one. It's required commencing construction of facility, the project will hold and shall divide and retain the surety in the form of a bond or deposit amount sufficient in the opinion of the board to cover the cost of moving the facility in the event the town must remove the facility and remediate the land estate. Assistant board will include the estimated cost of facility removal prepared by, fought by, and Montel, including, so it has to be have, there is nothing. Just said before it starts, it's going to be acceptable in the direction.
Was that on there?
Eight. It's a nice group, we know it's going forward.
Yeah. Is it, so we're gonna?
Yeah.
If we have a meeting, if we have to have another meeting in the next week or two to sign these, we need to put a quick meeting together. We haven't been making any guarantees. So we should have signed this continuing on. No, we have to get decommissioning process, it has to be put in there.
Well, I, I, I mean, Pat wrote it up, subject to, which means that before it starts, it's going to be acceptable to the board and to.
Yes. Wilson Carper. Well, make that motion.
Yeah, I'd make a motion, we signed it as, perhaps in my pack. The second one?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
It's important on my end too to have a decommission.
What's that?
It's important to me too, make sure, have a few decommissions. You don't want to end up having to take it down.
Yeah, no one wants to take it down.
No, that's the same.
So I'm never, please, Richard. Changes owner three or four times in the next twenty years, you know, twenty years out, what's the cost going to be?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Uh, we have another copy, we can't make a copy of that one, right? We signed it, but you're gonna have to come back with a copy, because we don't have a copy.
Yeah.
Okay?
We're gonna have to call it for the final.
Even more important.
Excuse me. Well, then, did you send two copies?
Yes. That still has to be given to Dan downstairs too, right?
Any idea how it's going with that as well? Any idea how the interconnect for it is going?
It, well, it's right at least hour, so.
You just never know.
Yeah.
With those guys.
Yeah.
It's got a few projects, so.
Oh, yeah.
Down so far, the cost of the interconnect.
Right.
They have to agree that the lines are sufficient to carry the projected output from the array, and it's not, and they put together a, a cost to improve the system.
Yeah, I think it's all been proved, all these, right? All these have been proved from evidence.
No, but just one for you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The one that we have with you is done for.
Right.
And that was. Our project is, I've been bundled, I've worked.
You all set with that, Doug?
Yes.
Excellent discussion for roadway improvement, stormwater on Morton Lane, senior consulting. Do we have one going, or?
Yeah, decommissioning on that was fifty-two more this morning, or was it? Well, it was anything because I had a deep. Well, I just want to work on the ones.
Three more, you said. Right, there's some two more.
Yeah, but it's what number was.
Oh, they are number, I know.
I would just.
Anyways, the last one on, on the paper.
I was trying to gate the open net at half to avoid, I was running gate right over, I'm saying. So I got side, then, like, I had someone bring it up. Last name.
You gotta bear with us, brother. I apologize.
Okay, so, not this, here's his number eight, should have been number eight on this one. It requires commencing destruction of facility, the project proponent shall provide and maintain the surety in the form of a bond or deposit of money sufficient in the opinion of the board to cover the cost of removal of facility, in the event the town must remove the facility and remediate the landscape. Assistant Board will include the estimated cost of facility removal prepared by a qualified engineer, Montel, including, so it has been happened, there is nothing. Just said before it starts, it's going to be acceptable in that direction.
What number was that on there?
Eight. That's good for me, we'll go forward.
You understand what we're gonna do?
Yeah.
If we have a meeting, if we have to have another meeting in the next week or two to sign these, we need to put a quick meeting together. We can't make any guarantees. So we should have signed this continuing on. No, we have to get decommissioned person, that's the question.
Well, I, I, I mean, that brought it up as subject too, which means that before it starts, it's going to be acceptable to the board and to.
Yes. Those are copper. You don't make that motion yet.
Yeah, I'd make a motion, we signed it as, perhaps in my pack. The second one.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
It's important on my end too to have a decommission.
What's that?
It's important to me too, make sure, have a few decommissions. You don't want to end up having to take it down.
Yeah, no one wants to take it down.
No, that's the same.
So I'm never, please, Richard.
Changes owner three or four times in the next twenty years, twenty years out, once the cost is going to be.
Uh, we have another copy, we can't make a copy of that one, right? We've signed it, but you're gonna have to come back for a copy, because we don't have a copy.
Yeah.
Okay?
We're gonna have to call it from the side.
Even more important.
Well, then, did you send two copies?
Yes. That still has to be given to Dan downstairs too, right?
Any idea how it's going with that as well? Any idea how the interconnect for it is going?
It, well, it's right at the link out, so.
You just never know.
Yeah.
With those guys.
Yeah.
It's got a few projects, so.
Oh, yeah.
Down so far, the cost of the interconnect.
Right.
They have to agree that the lines are sufficient to carry the projected output from the array, and it's not, and they put together a, a cost to improve the system.
Yeah, I think it's all been proved, all these, right, all these have been proved from evidence.
No vote, just one for you?
Yeah, yeah. I'll have to have.
The one that we have with you is done for.
Right.
And that one, our, right? So our project's, uh, I can bundle them up for. By the effort.
Super. You all set with that, Doug? Excellent discussion for roadway improvement, stormwater on Morton Lane, Zeele Consulting, do we have one going, or?
I am, I am, Jamie is unfortunately in town in Norfolk tonight, so.
Do you want to hold off, or you want to give the rest to people, or you want to do this?
Yeah, I'll hold.
Well?
Yeah.
It's up to you. That one go for ten fifty-two main, right?
Yeah, we get that.
Is that one in Pushing Lane?
Pushing Lane Robinson Road, ten fifty-five.
Yes. Okay, why don't we just do those then? Do you have all those certificate of action and certificate of approval from them?
They're here on my end. One two for Robinson Road.
One more, ten fifty-one. One, two, three, one. Four, four. This is for ten fifty-two main, or? It's all of them right there, Pushing Lane.
Yep.
Yimmans Road.
Ten fifty, ten fifty.
Those are just ten fifty-two, Pushing Lane and Robinson Road?
Four, ten fifty.
Ten fifty, ten fifty-two.
Pushing Lane and Robinson Road.
Let me see if there's anybody else. Same thing, security board, we have two gate deterrents, we never got one.
Okay.
Nothing from, the certificate of.
It, we've been at that for six months, we've been at this a long time.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just.
It's just a goal.
So we, that's the same, right?
Right.
That, it's got to be, before they can start, they've got to post, they've got to post bond or cash.
Right.
In an amount.
Subject two.
Now, we have to make this.
Board, right.
Same thing with all these, but, once you start doing this with Catherine, see if there's one form that she wants these people to do, whether it's a bond, or money put in, or whatever it might be.
Bonds are tougher, because they'll have a, they have an end date on them.
Okay.
And if you don't call a bond by that sort of date, uh, it lost your chance. If it, you're gonna do it, it roughly.
Well, it's up to her, I think Catherine wants a special, some type of arrangement for monies for decommissioning. So we made that motion on ten fifty Main Street. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's ten fifty, right?
We got, uh, ten fifty.
Yep. Anything on this number eight? Is there a motion on ten fifty-two Main Street? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. John, you're here for Paul too? That's the only reason I'm here.
Yeah, I can have another one too then. Look up. He's making a change.
Zero Robinson Lane. Is there a motion for certificate of action, special permit, stormwater management? Hey, can I have something on stormwater, on something? Just give me a second. Well, two fifty-one, that was it. So is there a motion on zero Robinson Lane? All in favor? I wish you get the decommissioning number sometime. There's a stipulation on there every January fifteenth, is that what that says? It reads, "Bides commencing destruction of the facility, the project proponent shall provide and maintain the surety in the form of a bond or deposit of money sufficient in the opinion of the board to cover the cost of removal of the facility, in the event the town must remove the facility, remediate the landscape. To assist the board, a fully inclusive estimate of costs associated with removal, prepared by a qualified engineer, the non-so included mechanism for calculating increased removal cost to inflation, surety amounts shall be in the amount approved by the board prior to the issuance of the building program. Proponent shall submit certificate, certification to the board that the surety is sufficient in effect each year by January fifteenth." You understand that?
Chairman, is there, I think there are paths forward on how we can get S W old, uh, they're looking at ten projects.
Uh, if we can't get S W's going, we have a chance to talk to him, see if he can do it, if he can't do it, then we will get another third party, maybe engineer from another review, a peer review.
I have a question.
Forget the name. Maybe we'll make that one of your new tasks.
Yeah.
Or go find another engineer.
There's another towns, so have you had to use up other, other engineers?
It's difficult to have a third party review it.
Right.
You don't have anything to debate or discuss.
Look there, can I have one copy of each? Is that okay?
Yeah, I can.
So we did certificate of action for ten fifty-two, Pushing Lane, uh, Yimmans Road, certificate of action, we do that one? Do you have anything on that? Okay, continue to next week, I mean, till August nineteenth, is there a motion to continue Yimmans Roads to be of action?
We make a motion to continue Yimmans Roads to be of that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Put that. You get your left, John, whatever you want to do, if you're all set, we're all set, okay? Okay, do you, if you need anything?
I think so.
Okay, until the record, Doug, have you won decommissioning number? We'll talk later when we.
Okay. Yeah, I'll try to get all Derek to, um, he was supposed to come back this week, he never got back to me, so. Just have to figure out what's going on over there.
Yep, okay. Okay, so we're all set?
Yes.
Sorry it took so long to get a deal with us. Do you want to do Paul first, John, if it's okay with us?
Yeah, let's, let's take care of the Mellos, and then we can move on to my other two writers. Okay, I'm ready to do that, sir.
Huh?
I'll reintroduce myself, John Romanelli, Zeele Land Services in Bedford, also representing, uh, Zeele Consulting Engineers out of Lakeville. Here representing the Mellow family, thirteen Perkins Lane in Cushinget. With the Mellos, we'd like to do, let me step back, there was a package I know that was delivered to conservation, a drainage report, paperwork, um, supposedly there was another set for you guys, but I know you don't have a set, so. I have a full set here, I'll just go over.
It's what's in this box right here.
That's fine, very hard.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, here we go, this is, um, map five lot nine, the nine acre piece of property. Follow his wife, look here, thirteen Perkins Lane, what we are trying to do is subdivide into two additional lots for their two sons. The question has been, come up between, uh, Tom Clark and others have asked was the status of Perkins Lane, it is a private way in existence, right, a subdivision control law, if you look at the town map, which I have today, Perkins Lane is here, if you look at the code, it's a paved, unaccepted street of about thirteen hundred feet, kind of a quaker, that is turned to a unfaved, unaccepted way all the way to the town line of Rochester. There are dwellings on that house past, how many, Paul? Two past?
Two past thirteen.
Eighteen.
Two past, uh, this is your, your mother, right?
My mom and my brother.
And his brothers at the end of, end of Perkins Lane.
So what we are proposing to do, propose two format lots off a private way, at this point here, it's basically a two block road, thirty-three feet wide. The issue that has always come up with the fire truck and whatnot is, is suitable for emergency vehicles. At this point right now, it's probably about twelve, thirteen feet wide, gravel packed, um, it's actually in pretty good shape if you drive it there, but what, uh, Jamie has done is proposed widening it to twenty feet, and I believe basically, right at this naming point, it's pretty much where the pavement ends. Correct me out there, but what we were going to do is basically propose, widening it twenty feet and making it all the way to, I'm gonna flip to the next page, basically all the way to the turnaround that we're gonna propose here, we'll go to the next sheet.
Just fifty feet into the lot line, is that what you're thinking, John?
Um, it's, uh, it's gonna be a fire truck turnaround at the end of the second lot, so it's probably, the whole expansion is gonna be about a thousand feet long, from where Perkins Lane's paved section ends, and where they're gonna light it.
Well, I, I think the paving, the pavement ends at thirteen, right at thirteen, that was paved up until, we bought the property in nineteen seventy-five, and my family's own that.
Right.
Our mom moved there in nineteen eighty, my brother built a house in that, ninety-two, ninety-three. It was paved up to, uh, the extension of my, end of my house, my, where the pot house is, and then, that, all that improvement through the years has been by the town, that access road, the fire access road, accesses fourteen open, uh, fourteen acres of open space land, that's owned by the town as well, so.
It's down on the left inside?
Yeah, right past us, right, on this path right here, we own the ten acres on the left, that thirteen road, and then, on the other side, eighteen, that's about the sixty-five acres we own on both, on both sides of the road. So we're just, we're, I'm just, uh, my question is that, I know the, what's a private road versus what is a road that has access to others? I ha, I have no, I don't shut the road down, I don't own it, I don't own the road, I can't put a gate up, I can't put a toll booth up, so, and the town files it, the town maintains it to a certain degree, they haven't maintained it in years, there's trash pickup. September of, uh, two thousand and six, we had a flame crash, I had fire trucks at my house, um, I had fire address on my house, there was never a concern about not being able to access anything else, so my, I'm not, I want to make it the red way, all I'm saying is, the boys, when they build a home, they can have access for turnarounds, for emergency vehicles, and I have no problem with that, my mother's eighty-five years old, she still lives there, they have access, so, my brother lives further up the road, he, I want him to have access, if you drive down the road, garbage truck goes on the road when, when they show up, you know how that goes, right? So when they show up, they, they drive down the road, and, um, if, I'm saying this, this big twenty foot of a lot, we're gonna make them have access to, to turnaround, I know it's, it's gonna, other people are gonna use it on outside of the road, you can go from Perkins Lane all the way through to the road. It's, it's a road, it's been there since I can remember, so I'm saying that, it's not a private road, I can't stop people from using that road. It's as, as someone that has a registered vehicle to drive down the road, have access licenses, so I'm, I talked to Mr. Romanelli about that, and I go, I understand the, uh, the legal application, legal application of what's accepted, what's not accepted, and I can also tell you, I don't pay any less taxes than anybody else that has a road that's accepted or not accepted, so I just want some consideration as far as that goes, um, we'll do anything we have to do on the kids property, to have access to emergency vehicles, turnarounds, anything that has to get done, but improvements on the road, I think that's something that the town should have to make any improvements on the road, because if I see a lot, your tree rock, your two lots, I see this thirteen foot driveway, there's no way that a lot of trucks driving down that road, they're gonna, they're gonna drop holes, they're gonna drive, take a truck down, or drive hanging tree down, bring the hole down there, to contain that blaze, so I know, this road, you can drive right up, I forbid, I want, I don't want that to happen, but they can drive right up and access the house, that's the only consideration I'm asking, that's all.
Like, you said there's another dwelling, more of those two?
The two, yes, my mother's, yes, my mother's house is here, and there is another one, probably another five hundred feet down.
Is that also in Cushinget or is that?
It's in Cushinget.
All our properties are in Cushinget.
What is the existing road now, John?
It's, it's packed gravel basically from Paul's house heading north, about, varies from twelve to fourteen feet wide.
I, I, I mean, this is, this is obviously quite an improvement over what's there right now, there's, there's another house further north that they've built on it, uh, like you said, it goes all, it goes all the way to Featherbed Lane.
Yep.
I mean, I can remember that.
Can we make the improvements the same way they are now, up to the, up to the kids' house?
It's already there, they're gonna build that lot, too, my mom's house is here, one lot's here, one lot's there.
That's, that's what he's proposing right now, is to do the improvements up basically to the end of.
Basically, this is why the fire truck turnaround is proposed.
At the end of the second one.
Like you said, we were there before, I remember that flame crash, all gone to bond and everything, there was just everything.
And I'm quite sure eventually there, that will be, because it's gonna be houses through the whole thing eventually, it's.
I don't think that, well, I don't think there would be more houses there, because the town owns that fourteen acres on that side.
It's conservation.
That's all conservation land. There's parking there for people that, that, they have.
Two, two.
Geo, geofashion, I don't, I don't know what that is, but it's, uh, it's geofashion, they, they search things.
Well, they wasn't, they, they stuff that's hidden.
Right, so they go there, it's, it's, um, I talked to the conservation, um, I forgot her name, she says it's the passive conservation land, and there's, there's a drive, there's two driveways there, there's access to the house up there.
But they could still, but they could still build on the Rochester side.
Yeah, Rochester, yeah, further, on the other side of Rochester.
I'm just saying, at some point, it seems like people are just gonna be traveling right through it, it's inevitable.
Yes.
GPS takes trucks down that road.
Right, so.
Trucks, these trucks.
If you take, if you, if you take, if you load a quick, uh, Featherbed Lane, but you put my address in there, it'll take you right down Featherbed Lane right to Perkins Lane, it'll take you around.
What can we get away with? Um, the, uh, does this have to have a stormwater permit?
It, it does, and that's been submitted to conservation, according to the regulations that have been approved in April, so that has been done, it's submitted, and what they're doing here is, is like I said, widening it to twenty feet wide, the natural slope is from north to south, and what they've designed here is a drainage wheel along the road, and at the end of the road right here, there's gonna be a catch basin, remember they, uh, I believe it's a twelve inch? They don't decide the material, yeah, twelve inch H, uh, HDP pipe into this basin here, which is obviously pretty large in size, they handle whatever hundred year storms coming down that, that lane right.
Tremendously more than existing one.
Yes, there's.
With the existing, right?
A road, so a twenty foot of road gravel?
It's pavement.
Yeah, this says pavement.
Sure knows, I love to do gravel, to do existing gravel, packed gravel.
That's what I would recommend, but it's up to, I mean, leave it the way it is, why put gravel on, I mean, hot top it all the way down, and put the expense on ball and stem?
I think it would work fine as gravel. I don't know if it's up to you to run by the fire chief or.
He hasn't complained on the road yet, has he?
Not that I know of.
Did, did he see twenty feet of pavement? Has he seen, has the fire chief seen twenty feet of pavement?
It's just his other hoses down there.
Yeah, I, I know.
Why can't?
I, 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 I mean, it's been a road for as long as I can remember, I haven't been on it recently, like, in the last four years, forty or fifty years.
I was just gonna say.
It's a very bouncy ride.
Yeah, it's been a lot.
Now, it's.
I know, I know almost same circumstances, the fact that they, we just bring this as a format, we wouldn't do much other than that, because it's an existing way in existence, that's used by everybody in town.
I'm assuming this front edge and eight and the proper square footage for all, three lots of.
We got a hundred fifty foot, five hundred sixty thousand square feet?
Actually, these lots are a little bit bigger. I actually do have one maybe a plan.
I can show you that too, it's a little bit.
Okay, this basically is the form A plan, there are some weapons offside on the property, in the west. So, Paul's house is gonna remain with, uh, two point three six acres to this line here. Including the, uh, the ten two basin, and then this lot's gonna have two seventeen plus eighty three, almost three hundred feet. But we needed to make it wider to get this square footage, and it's one point three eight acres, and it's all up, basically the same size with, uh, second lot there, nine inch, one point three eight acres. With a proposed access even for the turnaround. This is the, this is the remaining land here. We're also creating that fourth lot.
Yes.
Are there any notes on it? It's gonna be a building lot, it's all the way to Provo, it's hard.
Lot, yeah, there isn't a note on there, but basically, we're paying the fee to do four lots here, however the names are, whatever they're called. Right now, it's just, I have, I should, we have to find, put the body of that, so that there's some handles on there right now.
I know, we, I, you know, we constantly get asked to improve, improve formas on, you know, on standard lots, and these are just some of the lots.
Is it a private road?
Yes, it is. Well, just private, in that sense, just means it's not acceptable by the town, right? I mean, it, it's a way in existence prior subdivision control, a number of other ones that we have.
Why can't we just bring it up the way it is?
Well, I'm, my question is, are they looking for three lots that they can get a building permit on tomorrow, or four? That's my, my question.
Oh, three.
Yeah. Really, that's the extent of what the nine acres is, that's really why we're showing it that way. From what I know, there's plans for anybody to build on that anytime soon. We want to put a note on the plan, subject to that, whatever, I can't see the lot number from here, but.
Lot number.
This one here is, uh, nine I. Lot number nine I, not to be considered a building lot in its whole. Roadway improvements acceptable to, like, board from town, Christian remain, to section of the road.
That's a, that's a great idea.
You okay with that?
That's fine, yeah.
So we can, you want to bring it up to twenty foot hot top, or you wanna leave it gravel the way it is, going to the.
Good luck with it. Twenty foot gravel. It is not as easy to take care of at times, but.
You can do it all.
I mean, it's been. Put the boys to work. Get out there with snow shovels. Um, I would make, you guys happy with, with our?
Absolutely.
I would make a motion.
Unless you want hot top.
Well, we won't, we won't stop.
The town does, I won't, I won't.
We have, we have, we put other stipulation on there. The town will not be requested to hot top this for the, for everybody's lifetime in here, but, yeah, I, I would make a motion that we improve the form A. Subjected to the proposed road improvements, drainage basins with twenty feet of gravel. Put in for the rebuilding lots. Also, part of that motion would be that lot nine I not be considered a building lot until such time as the roads are moved up to. Up to and past that lot, subject to land board and. Common, of course, approval of those. They get them to three lots, right?
Yep. You okay with you, John?
Sounds great.
Here you go, guys, you guys.
These are the bucks, you know.
I thought you were the boss.
I'm not the boss, I'm just here to, you know, just cleave with the cord, you know. Just give us a hand here. But if it wasn't for the fact that that road has been there, and then used by houses and everything else, I mean, that is, that is a little unique for this particular road.
Yes, and that, my, my thoughts exactly, that's why.
And, again, we get asked all the time to sign off on lots that now, little or no improvement on. And then, it gets, well, you did it for so-and-so, why won't you do it for me? The unique situation here is, there is a road in existence that's been used for decades. And a number of houses along the whole length of the road as it is, so that's, that's my two cents for the next person who comes in.
In the history of the road, it's, it used to be a wagon, it's a coach road that led to Boston, that was.
We, we don't even wanna get into ancient ways, we're gonna get on that.
I didn't say that word.
No, no.
Is there a motion to accept that motion?
Our second motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. So we'll come back next month with the plan with the note on there.
Yep.
And the change of, rather, the change to a twenty-foot wide gravel road, great, that sounds like a great plan.
You know we're gonna get grief over this, but. I'm just telling you, I, I know exactly, Rick, you've been at this, the most unique situation that we have, we're doing it, it should be done.
It's not, it's not like something we've got, just, it's been this forever since I've been.
I understand. It's easily provable just by local people in towns, that we all know that road has been being used forever.
On the sense.
Right.
But even the trucks that come down, they stop at our house and say, can we really get through to Featherbed Lane from here, you know, or they, they end up backing up all the way down the road, it's crazy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Mr. Romanelli.
You're welcome.
We paid a fee for it in our application, and it was short seventy-five dollars.
Yeah, spoke to.
Yeah, spoke to Cam. And I gotta talk to you, Doug.
Yes, sure.
That goes, and that's the additional check of seventy-five dollars. I can go through all the, like, uh, years. I can't use that, I'm, I'm, I'm almost taking that as part of my.
Doug, this is, uh.
Yeah, actually, the Riley's, the last house on Rochester's side. This particular, whatever, you're still involved, Riley's.
Oh, right. Yeah, Perkins Lane, or whatever you need, that's, uh, an A and R. We'll discuss it later, just, you can have that. He said he sent a checklist in, this is a form A too, right, John?
Correct.
I'll just show you how to do that. You got enough in your play, uh.
I told him the other day, I said, you're gonna have to bear with it.
Questions?
This one, we need to know there's an application for improving the road somewhere. Seeing we had something like that, is that correct?
Correct. This is, uh, what I understand was approved as a roadway improvement project at the last.
Yes, we approved it, there was forms that we were supposed to fill out, and fees, and all that stuff.
Right. Doug, we're, I have here, Cam said we come up with two copies, which they have, the application and the check is here.
Okay.
What we're also hoping tonight, if possible, basically what the plan, actually what we have, right, right here, does is it removes the interior lot line, if possible. It's needed, uh, when you see highlighted here in yellow, that's the D description to it, it includes this lot here also. The gentleman that's buying it is going to be putting his house basically right, right within that lot line, that parcel line there. We normally would do that as an E to an X certification, and just record it that way, but we figured, well, we're coming here tonight, we had to pay the fee anyways, so let's go as an A and R, just to allow that material off, and all we are asking for. And I did put a little note on there that it, uh, that the privilege shown here on the compasses lots fifteen, eighteen, seventeen, on the town assessors, perhaps lot fourteen, that way the assessors can see what the two form lots were, and now, basically, one. What a big lot. Very, very proud of it, the motion that we put in the plan.
Yes, submit it, how about that?
It's really easy.
Executed. All in favor?
Aye.
Was there anything put on this one that anybody else that was building down the other end had to improve the road?
Um.
I don't know, a few more, and something like that, you remember?
I don't remember, I, there wasn't.
Oh, Doug, yeah, that was part of the planner update too, to the road itself.
Which road are we talking?
More than one.
So some stipulation in there, somebody would have put on the I lot.
So, just kind of based off this map, it's a gravel road, pretty much, until you get to Rockford Street over there, which is up to this point. This street runs through into Haven, uh, to my knowledge, I believe, I think, it's supposed to, it continues on another side. Um, so, if, there's gonna be more houses developed down this way at some point, so why wouldn't we require it, or to build a roadway?
I guess, I'm just teasing, if they put a house on it.
Especially, especially considering, like, you're gonna be considering fire safety, and future development.
Is there a house on map fourteen, lot fifteen up there? There is.
This is it, really?
This is the one.
This is that one? Oh, okay.
Correct. The turnaround is gonna be on the floor, it's a way to do it. Which, which would make sense.
And we said, you know, yeah, you bring up with the guy, the next guy to do it, well, he would have to bring up to the end of that lot.
Right. Yeah, and we could have rid the water paint down also, there's stairs, top water on the plane.
Yeah, we accepted this, so that's pretty correct.
It's just one of those stipulations. What Jim was saying, there was, I'm not sure there was supposed to be some written decision, the gentleman's buying, just trying to get financing to work, but.
And like, get the certificate of approval, like all these other projects, and they're right.
I mean, it's not a form A, we're supposed to, access is. Do we wanna sign a form A or? I'm, I'm signing. Subjected to the roadway improvements previously, greeting, greetings?
Yep.
We have to bring in a plan showing the roadway improvements. They previously proposed.
You gonna have to put that on the I lot?
No, no, we can, there's not to go on.
No, you, you take the I lot, and you get this one, and then you can. Is the motion to sign that?
How they do it, the same form A. Lot, lot map fourteen, lot seventeen, that thing. Build a building, subject to. Thank you, so, for those roadway improvements and turnaround on the road.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I usually send, uh, a recorded copy, tools I record, I send it to.
Just a book in the page, right?
Yeah, I usually send, I scan it in, it's a copy of the session. That way the assessors will.
You got one more?
I do, I do.
Push it, that's what I wanted, to the end, I hope you don't mind.
See the best of the end, yeah. So, uh, we're gonna need fourteen copies, or however many we need to sign.
Ten copies.
Pay off the furniture, ten copies left.
There's nine here, one should be downstairs, correct?
Um, I'm heavily confused. She only asked me to office of, of this form A. Because we, that was already accepted, or, was already.
Just a road improvement, right, but this, this is a road, this is just a road improvement, right?
Right, I think that's some of it.
The mess up is, well, it's a roadway improvement.
By the way, again, it's really out of form A, it's existed on the highway, just needs to be improved.
She was saying there is an application somewhere.
Yeah, I just gave it to Doug.
Okay.
With the, the, the road improvement, right? That's just one, there could be another application to use for a roadway improvement, there isn't one.
That's it? Is that what you have, just a form A, or?
Yes, it's the.
Yeah, it's a form A.
With the form J and all that, it's subject.
What was, then where Cam come up with, is there a, one, a road improvement?
Uh, from previous projects.
Okay. The old kids were there.
Is that one?
That's what she says, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't seen it.
That would be another big certain project, or I mean, funny.
So you want us to sign these, or?
Well, let's, I signed the I lot, so hopefully he can go, he can record it, and get his, uh, get his finance again.
If there's any problems, blame it on Rick.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Seven thirty-three Main Street, what are we doing here? This is the entrance way to Redwell. Uh, there was a house right here, that was taken down fairly in two thousand and twelve.
Enson property?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, house.
Women gets, he was a character.
The queen of the Calum wall is the, she inherited a property from the Soros Family Trust, and she is a Soros Family Trust. It's a twenty, yeah, it's twenty-nine acres currently, right now, this, we cut out two thousand and twelve for her son, Chris, her daughter wants to go here. So we are cutting up the size of the lot, four acres, four acres, with plenty of frontage, no, no, what we're seeing, what we're seeing is, uh, a corner here. Reading land is still twenty-five and a half, uh, twenty, I'm sorry, two point four is six, and that, when, this is the, uh, the golf course, it's back here, the area, and. The truck, they're related, so here, they're doing it in Bethesda. So that goes back far enough to get some gravel and things.
That side of the street's good, the other side of the street.
It's, yeah, it's kinda spotty, I mean, there's some places that, that the bad stuff extends on the outside of the streets, yeah. I think it's like seventeen, eighteen acres. Yeah, no, I, there, there's some depth stuff. Well, the daughter, I guess, used to hang out here as a kid, and she wants her house very close to the old house.
Old house. Why don't you give us this one first, this one's more straightforward than the other. I, I would make the most of the improvement, the form A, like, the seven thirty-three Main Street has.
That one has the proper copies.
Simply form A.
Yeah.
Executed. All in favor?
Aye.
You can do the same thing with this one on there. Where they call here, uh, process and chess case, including on the drawing. I'll show you how to do that too. Is this the I lot?
Oh, no, I didn't get it, where's the I lot?
It looks like the wrong, or?
No, it's just, it's the kind of copy. It's just the kind of copy it is. Cash. There it is. Like that's. I'm just gonna copy the application. There is one downstairs also.
So it only got one stall already. That continued. Or two, that continued.
Two, one, two.
If there's more coming.
Are there? It's good. Very long, I don't know if we'll see him. Is that one zero, one sixty-five, Nides Lane?
Yeah, that's two separate ones, by the way. Sixty-five and zero. The house on sixty-five is not the next road. So they call it zero and sixty-five.
I did, sorry.
Yeah. Anderson Consultants.
I guess I write a bunch of papers. You want to start a thing?
Yeah, this might be a little easier. Well, what's on?
I would very thank.
The victim? September. He recused himself until he finished all his projects. I called Phil, Phil wasn't able to make it tonight.
She said, well, that was his motorcycle out there. Hey, there, somebody, I don't know.
That's neighbors. Oh, it's yours?
Mm-hmm.
What are you waiting for? Mile line?
I have a question to ask the board.
Do you remember Bradford Street up in there? To include?
Yeah.
The three Form A lots?
That resource wasn't on. Considering what waits till they get something in writing, the decision was made to do that. The roadway.
The board asked for a, a dollar amount.
Because it's just a. And the contention basis is so large and stuff. So I think they came up with a price of like thirty-five thousand, something like that. Jim and I is okay with that price. They need something in writing on the board. Saying that, two of the three lots could be released by.
Built up. Try this one out.
Bradford Street.
That was a Zune, so I, I know it was.
He was over the state, we had to leave roughly.
Wasn't over, we probably. I know the Form A was approved last year. But we came forward with the roadway improvement.
Yeah, we did, we did ask for the roadway improvement.
Yeah.
And if the detention base hadn't been done, it was only by the.
Right, right.
So Jim said he would be okay with releasing two roadway lots. As long as the board and Dan Menard is okay with that.
Well, it's not Dan, Dan Menard saying it was all set with the work that had been done. So we would, we would certainly like to make sure that Dan Menard is happy with the work that's been done today.
Should we get a letter from Dan stating that?
That would be a good idea.
Right.
I mean, that's usually what we've done on these things. Dan, Dan's gotta be happy with the roadway improvement.
Yeah, it looks, have you been down?
Also on vacation for three weeks. No, I have. I tried to go on vacation, doesn't make me feel better. They didn't get a vacation at all last year, so that's like what we can have, right?
Remember what? Anytime twenty twenty or?
I want to say October. Yes, unfortunately, I was under the mistaken impression that the Pacific Northwest was normally cool. Then it was around.
Ran into, went into an all-time record.
Ah, yeah.
And now it's all on fire. So I really would have had a problem if I'd waited any longer.
Do you?
Yes.
I think we're gonna get a letter from Dan stating that he's okay with the dollar amount.
All right, that'd be good if we get it. If we get a letter from Dan that he's okay with the dollar amount, he's okay with the work that's been done today. That would be marvelous.
Okay, I will do that.
So you want, uh. I don't have a copy. I don't have a copy, you should take it and bring it back.
It's gonna be.
Okay. Does that help?
Next question?
Take it back, Phil.
If you would switch, we can talk. One other item.
They only listen, that's four. They only get four here.
The dreaded common driveway for Josh Aguda. Jim and, you're kidding me?
Because that was all signed sale of the living.
We have to modify it. Why do, why do we have to this? On, on, who wants it modified? Josh?
Jim?
Yeah. Because the seventy-five foot, the one set up. The way George, George's job.
Building that other house.
Right. The way the common driveway bylaw is written, it's gotta be a minimum seventy-five.
But we're not, we're not a common driveway anymore. We approved, we, we approved the subdivision plan with wait. And we're on.
You are. That plan, Josh doesn't want to report that plan. That plan is never reported.
So, and I think Jim and I know this stuff and don't want to, so we're okay with that.
Okay.
If we can, what we need to do is shorten the common driveway because where George's house is, doesn't need seventy-five foot set up. Shorten the common driveway to not, to his driveway and grant an easement for the rest of the ways for Josh.
Josh's house.
That's what Jim is saying.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm all for it, being able to get three lots out again. And I'm all for the town not getting any potential requests to improve or allow or pick garbage up or subdivision.
Okay, that's, we will, we'll be back next. Did you go to the house? Whatever you want. I'm behind you. Whatever you want to do.
Yeah, well, he's getting hung up and going to help. George, he can, he's going to help. So this was.
That's why Doug is here, because Doug is gonna put in the next year, some proposals where we all sit down and have a farming thing and talk about these things instead of going from one to another, to another, to another. Excellent.
Unfortunately for Josh, I think probably there have been some misunderstanding. Misconception about why we have, why this concept of, of common driveways and retrieval came up. I think they now understand some of the reasoning behind it. And why it truly is better to have three retrieval, three common driveway than it is to have six subdivision lots and another six hundred or seven hundred foot long, short road that the town is gonna have to take care of. I, I, we had one conversation and I think I finally got that through to Jim and a couple of the other parties that were on the other end of that conversation. There's been memorable times throughout town, but the town, uh, that's exactly what's happening. It's, it's, it doesn't make any sense to put, spend all that money on road construction to get three smaller lots. The town doesn't get, town gets three less houses with kids going to school and no road to take care of. They don't tell them. You know, that's, uh.
That one too, John, don't lose him.
It's just a copy.
Yeah, I would like.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna continue on with the meeting. You all set, John?
I am all set. Thank you very much for all this.
No, just give me five minutes after the meeting.
We'll try and make it quick, we got a few things. Get a copy of the last meeting's minutes, I don't want to.
Very good.
Motion approved. Minutes.
You got it?
June third, twenty twenty-one, is there a motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's all of you, I was telling you. Really, my eyes are just.
And the rest will get to you, what we have here. The rest is up to me, whatever you want to speak about. I heard the first, maybe didn't scare you away. Well, better understand what to expect for next time.
Uh, so for us to pursue a lot of the grants, we have to actually engage in other projects, need to update the open space recreation plan. Um, part of that is creating open space recreation committee. So I'd be looking for somebody from planning board, uh, some other boards to be able to go on that board, start doing that project. Um.
I was seconded.
He's got three or four months off from, from sitting here. There's something new all the time. This is the first time that elected, uh, just had a number of.
This is, this is not mine.
It's not fair.
All the way again.
We're gonna talk about Morgan Lane.
You get the wrong idea, that was carrying a car.
Construction standard to Morgan Lane. Um, so additional fees for solar projects. Uh, I had received a memo from Jim.
All right, sorry.
So I had received a memo from Jim about one of the solar projects where they have ten to twelve poles just kind of been aligned on their property. And like visually that's dispossessing, especially in an efficient network, right to market community. It's all about pair of peel and things like that. I mean, all of our solar projects were requiring a two-foot burn and have provided to be planted. Um, so to my knowledge, all, everything, everything that's on the telephone pole can be placed in concrete storage containers underground. So a way for us to kind of discourage developers from using telephone poles is the, sorry. Approved by the board of selectmen is a five thousand dollar fee per pole that they intend to place in the property.
Say it again?
Uh, so it was approved by a selectman already, but it was a five thousand dollar fee per telephone pole that they were gonna put on the property for solar projects.
So if they go putting twelve poles to sixty. I don't think it's legal. Depends on what ever source wants and.
I said, I'm just gonna say it's all about whatever source is required.
Well, we have other solar projects already that have been completed that have transformers underground, everything's underground. And it's all, all run underground out to the street access and it comes up one pole and that connects into the grid. So I didn't really see that being an issue.
Would the closer projects to the road or?
No, one was like way back behind in development and like you have to go off the path a little, a little bit to get over there. I, I'll top my head up, I forgot the project it was.
Main Street or? One way, way down the north end? Catino?
Yeah, it's really in the north end, uh, like on your way over into New Bedford.
Main Street going to Rochester? Not that. I wanna say it's a lot of. Solar over it?
Yeah, I'd say back in this area over here.
In the middle of the road? Catino's?
Uh?
Catino's?
Yeah.
Oh, five eighty, middle road.
Yep, yeah, so they have everything underground. You don't see anything, anything. And for these other projects that are closer to the street, like it would just make more sense to them visually to do that. Uh, in addition, Jim had talked to me about doing a five thousand per megawatt battery storage for those solar fields that are using battery storage facilities on site.
Five thousand?
Per megawatt.
This is whatever they want, they wanna do, right? I agree.
Uh, Morgan Lane Construction Standard, they covered that more or less with what we had talked about, how far the road. Special residential development. So obviously the proposed development for what the title of this factory is, I didn't talk about doing five plus community over there. Um, currently Arizona bylaws don't make them out for some of the things they wanna do. Um, so me and Jim have been working together to kind of try to create like a special residential development, open space, residential development, uh, by law, to include. Um, and like when I was talking to him about my, one of my big issues that I was having was exclusively making it fifty-five and over in, in the bylaw.
They don't want to do it, right?
What?
They don't wanna make it fifty-five and over?
No, I, I, I think we have a certain percentage within town of those developments that are fifty-five and over. And then beyond that, like make it a little more inclusive for other individuals that are on the location. Uh, I don't know what works lots of deal in that.
I only caught.
This is for the old titleist property.
We can discuss that later, we don't have to do it now, right?
Yeah, just, just throwing it out there. I mean, we, I had gone out to Rochester to look at a similar development like that. One to two dwelling units per property. Um, centralized homeowner association, community pool, like everything, a small.
That's the one behind common laws?
Yeah. And I think that'd be nice to have with the pitch net. So that's kind of thrown that out there. Um, administrative system update. So I interviewed two candidates already. Um, fortunately, I didn't talk to this today. We have stolen this in twenty twenty-five hour, we position, we don't have money in the budget for that. So I have to go back to the board of selectmen to give me more money to hire for the secretary.
That's it? Tell them no secretary, no planning board.
There's no money, there's no money for a secretary in the last, in the last budget? Last year's budget?
If there is, but not to cover twenty, twenty-five hours.
Well, I only have twenty hours.
That's it? We've got mail and then one notice we intend to sell.
Sixty-one eight. Three twenty-nine middle road. Oh, we did that one earlier, it's assigned. We got to sign, we signed again. Probably brought in like last October or something?
Oh, no, that was my first, I hear my first week probably about that.
It's already signed, you wanted to. What's up? Select and sign it. Right? Right? They signed it, we're fine, we don't want to buy it. They need something. Here is, assigned minutes from the June third meeting, we put into myla's minutes, well.
Assigned minutes, we have.
So, we have to ask the selectman for more money in order to get a secretary, is there a fee with that? Thirty-five, twenty grand, thirty grand, forty grand, you have any idea?
Oh, for how much I'm going to be asking for?
It's for the secretary, right?
Oh, no, I'm, I, I just found out today, I haven't had the opportunity to start looking at that.
Great. Anything else?
Uh, mail.
Anything special? All of the appeals from different towns? Rochester, Rochester. But, Rochester. Rochester, nothing serious, nothing on the line. With that, our next meeting will be, what they say?
Nineteenth August. Six thirty.
We've got it, August nineteenth, six thirty here. Is there a motion?
Talking to the director.
Your second.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, thank you, folks.